Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance in the prayer.
If you'll please bow with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you, Lord, for the ability to meet tonight. We just thank you for the ability to do the business of the city of Levelland and in our wonderful nation, in our wonderful state, wonderful county and city, Lord. We just pray for protection and favor over Levelland, Lord. We just pray that you would guide us and give us wisdom and favor tonight as we do the business of the city of Levelland. We pray for all our first responders and all our citizens, Lord. Please keep us safe and out of harm. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Now we'll have our statements of citizens. We have three people speaking tonight. And you'll each have three minutes to speak. If you'll please say your name, your address, and then the timer will begin. And our first speaker is Ms. Mary Engle Downe.
Mary Engle Downe, 2016 Tech Drive, Levelland. Um, I came before you tonight, um, Mayor and Council to talk about a couple of things that I've been researching. One of the things I researched this last week while I had time was our taxes this year. This today from last year, this time last year, we're $100,000 delinquent and collecting taxes. I pulled that up. The other thing I did is I went to the courthouse to find out how many foreclosures we have. Currently, we have seven on the roll for October and two already on there for November. Enough is enough. We can't take anymore. No more bonds, no more certificate obligations. We've had enough. And now we're talking about a pool. So we'll see what how that goes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Our second speaker is Ms. Chris Wade.
Good evening. My name is Chris Wade and I live at 413 East Adams. And my concern is about the water consumption billing. Uh, the new rates go into effect, water rates, October 1st, is that correct? So with that being said, our billing will start on the consumption for usage for months, uh, weeks prior to that. And I feel like if the new water rates go into effect October the first, then the consumption that is used for October, that's when the water billing rate should go into effect, not water usage for, from, um, from September, from, um, July to August. That's what the, uh, I mean, August the 14th to September, that's what the new billing rates are going to be. It's going to affect that water usage and it should be the other way around. So you may have to amend your ordinance to say that the water rates will go into effect in November to address the water consumption used in the month of September. Thank you.
Our last speaker will be Ms. Tonya McCowen.
Tonya McCowen, 205 Flint Drive. My concern is code enforcement. On Flint Drive and Flint Avenue, we have young people or people of five o'clock, I'm not sure, that race down that road. And I don't know of any animal that looks both ways before they cross the road. And I don't know of any children that do that without being told on that road. So there was one. The other is, is we have people parking on the sidewalks to where we cannot use our sidewalks correctly. I don't feel safe having to walk in the street because someone has a car or a truck up on the sidewalk where I can't walk. Also, we have on the corner, we have a house that has cactuses and trees. We can't use our sidewalks because cactus is overgrown, the tree is overgrown. The woman feeds a ton of stray cats there as well. Um, it's scary to walk down and get hissed at and bopped at by cats. As well, I'm, I have an eight-year-old daughter. I can't have that with her. Um, that would be my main concern is the speeding down the road and not being able to use our sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCowen. For coming. The first item on the agenda is a presentation of the City of Levelland Swimming Pool Assessment. Hello?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is George Dinas. I work with Councilman Hunzaker and we are an aquatics specialty firm. So we focus on any type of swimming pool planning and design founded in 1970 by uh, James Doc Councilman. He was a legendary swim coach at Indiana University. And so since 1970, we have focused specifically on uh, swimming pools, primarily on the municipal university side. And our goal is to provide you with good information about how to make a, the best decision uh, for the city about moving forward with the existing or a new facility. Uh, so I have a couple of uh, slides to share with you. Uh, on our feasibility study process, we usually divide that into three different segments. We look at uh, the need for a pool. In that case, it started with assessing the existing swimming pool. Uh, from there, we look at uh, different costs, both on the repair, renovation, replacement, and also look at different conceptual options. And so uh, we're about thirty to forty percent through our feasibility study. And so we figured it was a good time to come and uh, check in with you all and show you what we have uh, found to date. And so uh, you do have an aging aquatic facility, uh, trending towards forty years of age. And uh, our firm usually sees the, an outdoor aquatic facility uh, can be in that thirty to fifty-year range. Uh, there's a lot of variables and uh, factors that play into that, but uh, anywhere from thirty to fifty is a good number. You all had a renovation of the mechanical systems in 2014. And so uh, that's usually something that will get your pool uh, closer to the, the fifty range as opposed to the thirty range if it has that renovation uh, partially through the life of the facility. Uh, so when I looked at the assessment, uh, we definitely saw an aging facility. You can see some of the pictures here, like uh, the middle on the top and the top right, areas where there is significant concrete cracking within the pool shell where the coping stone uh, touches the pool deck as well as the uh, pool at the top of the rep, you have some spalling concrete and uh, these have been patched by staff and they have done a good job to maintain it. So the facility can continue to be open and safe for uh, the community here. Uh, we also saw some issues with uh, the pool deck. Anytime you have a pool of this age, there's going to be heaving and settling. If there's ever been a water loss issue, uh, sometimes the water can degrade the subsoil and cause the deck and the pool to shift a little bit. And so uh, we saw some of that on the, the deck. We saw some separation between the stainless steel gutters and uh, the pool wall. And some of that will be corrected in the off-season with just routine maintenance and uh, regrowding before the next summer season. And as I mentioned, you all had had a mechanical renovation. And so uh, that equipment, for the most part, is still in uh, good condition, keeping the water uh, clean and sanitized for uh, the users. We did see some corrosion within the mechanical space. Anytime that you have chemicals stored within that room, uh, as opposed to have them in exterior rooms. The mureatic acid is in an exterior room. The chlorine is stored within the mechanical room. But we do see uh, that that can corrode any type of uh, metal within that room. So the mechanical, uh, the electrical box is there, the bolts and connection, the PVC piping uh, show signs of corrosion. Uh, and then the building is aging. You know, it was a building that was built forty years ago. And so it shows uh, signs of uh, aging as well. That has the entry area as well as the locker room facilities and the mechanical structure as well. Uh, so when we uh, look at that, we came up with a list of repairs just to keep the facility going, essentially in an as-is condition. And that really looked at addressing the cracking in the, the pool walls, continuing to patch the concrete deck area to make sure it's safe for the pool users. We looked at uh, conducting a watertightness test to ensure that the pool's not losing uh, abnormal amounts of water. Some water loss is common from evaporation and splash out. Uh, and so you can uh, do a watertightness test and run the pool system for twenty-four hours, monitor water loss, and then turn the pool system off for twenty-four hours and monitor water loss. And that'll help you determine not only how much water you're losing, but also if it's related to the pool structure or to the pool recirculation system, whether it's a piping issue or whether it's a structural issue. And so those are some things that we had recommended uh, within the report, uh, as well as doing a replacement of the pool deck at some point. Uh, I don't think it's imminent for next season. Continue to patch as-is. Uh, but once you decide the future of the facility, then uh, a lot of these recommendations can uh, fall into place. Uh, so at the uh, children's pool, uh, these pools by definition are not ADA compliant based on the 2010 standards. And actually, they, a pool of this size is not able to be brought up to code for the, the ADA standards for 2010. Uh, and also the modern standard would be for this pool to be a standalone pool and not connected to the larger pool. Uh, but a lot of these pools that were built in the seventies and eighties would just combine the two on the same system. But in today's code, they have uh, different recirculation uh, requirements and then different stipulations for uh, sanitation. And so it would be recommended that uh, for the future, that uh, if you have two bodies of water like this, that they would be uh, completely uh, separated. Uh, but at this time, the, the pool is grandfathered into code in terms of the uh, being connected to the existing uh, facility. And so what we did from there is we take the existing condition of the pool and we start to look at uh, several different options to consider. And these are really all looking at uh, just a step above the repair scenario. And so what you all are doing now, staff is doing a great job of repairing and keeping the facility uh, going for the summertime. Uh, so these would be larger renovations that would give the pool another fifteen to twenty-five years of life. And so the first option would be that uh, you could utilize uh, what's called uh, Mirtha technology. So Mirtha uh, develops stainless steel panels for swimming pools. They're the ones that have done the Olympic trials pools, the past several Olympic trials where they can uh, essentially build a pool within Lucas Oil Stadium where the Colts play, as in the 2024 Olympic trials. They do the world championships uh, that were recently held. And so they can, they can build a temporary pool using their stainless steel modular panels, but they also have a long-term uh, benefit as well. And so they have Mirtha Renovaction, which they developed as an uh, solution for aging facilities where you can take an existing pool, uh, reinforce the existing pool walls with renovation technology and it can give uh, another fifteen to twenty-five years of life uh, to a facility and even have some structural and watertightness uh, guarantees with that. Uh, the other thing that they could do within that type of technology that we would be uh, the designer and then they would have the uh, technology for it would be to uh, possibly add a zero-depth entry to the pool. That's one of the big things that's missing from pools from the eighties is zero-depth uh, amenities. And that's not something, that's something that didn't come around to the municipal market till early nineties, late nineties, uh, specifically in the state of Texas. And so uh, you see here how you could have the existing uh, facility, reinforce it with the uh, Mirtha Renovaction, but then you could add a zero-depth uh, entry to that. So you could expand the size of the pool by about eighteen hundred square feet. Uh, you could add, uh, even add a waterslide as well, like we were showing there. Here's an example of uh, what that facility could look like uh, based on a comparable project uh, that we designed. And then uh, also have a couple of uh, images that uh, you can see the aerial view right here that shows the zero-depth entry uh, connecting to that uh, main pool. And so with that, we would see this uh, solution uh, being about five million dollars, uh, give or take. And so we look at it not only in terms of uh, providing an allowance for a bathhouse renovation, so keeping the existing bathhouse. Uh, we would also uh, look at reinforcing the existing pool, adding in the zero-depth entry, uh, replacing the pool deck. And that gets us to a construction cost in about three and a half to four million dollar range. Then we have about a million dollars of soft costs, so design fees, contingencies, and then some escalation. Uh, the second option would be to utilize the Mirtha Renovaction on the existing pool. So again, give the existing pool another twenty-plus years of life in its same form. Uh, but you could add, instead of a zero-depth entry, you could add a splash pad that would be within the gates of the pool. Uh, and so you can see that here on the drawing, plenty of space within the existing pool site uh, to do that. And so instead of having the zero-depth entry to the pool, you could have the uh, wet deck with the vertical sprays, uh, similar to what you see in the picture right there. And so uh, what this will do would be just to provide uh, another amenity for young children at the pool, uh, since the pool depth, you know, starts at about three feet. Uh, so this would allow a play space uh, for the little ones. And you can see some uh, images there of how that would fit on the side and interact with the pool within the fence line. Uh, one of the other things that we do, which is fairly common, when we add a splash pad, is to actually fence it off from the inside of the pool area as well and have access to the outside. Splash pads are definitely something that could be uh, utilized May 1st, all the way through October 1st, sometimes October 15th, if the weather is favorable. And so this would uh, provide not only a, a ten to twelve-week aquatic amenity for the city residents, but it could actually extend to uh, four to four and a half, maybe even five months on a good year if the weather uh, cooperates. Uh, when we looked at the cost of this one, it was very similar to the cost of the first option. Obviously, the renovation, the existing pool is pretty constant, but it was again, right around that five million dollar range to provide uh, another twenty-plus-year solution for the pool. Uh, the third option we looked at was essentially a replacement in kind. And so that's looking at uh, if you were going to rebuild roughly the same size of a pool uh, today with some of uh, just a different layout or different configuration. And so we would look at having that zero-depth entry like you see there, uh, maybe an open lap and recreational area within the middle of the pool. And then an area for uh, waterslide as well. We could put some different types of vertical sprays and uh, spray elements within the zero depth entry. Uh, but the goal here would be to, you know, make this a multi-generational facility. So having the zero depth for the young kids, uh, having some uh, thrills with the waterslide for uh, the aging, you know, the older, older kids to teenage years, you could incorporate uh, diving like you currently have now, or uh, we do a lot of climbing walls that uh, are really safe and uh, hang over the deep end of the pool. Uh, but then also have space that you uh, could do a, a summer swim team. You could do water fitness, water row weeks classes. You could do lap swimming, swimming lessons. And so just having a, a new, a new layout and configuration uh, that would allow for all of that. You could do this in conjunction with a new bathhouse, or you could look at this as a, uh, a mixture of renovation of the bathhouse as well as uh, a new facility. Uh, but a couple of other uh, pools, uh, the top one is in Baytown, Texas. It's called Calypso Cove. We designed that uh, several years ago. And then uh, the bottom right is Jacinto City, Texas. And so uh, that pool has uh, lap lanes, waterslide, even has a small current channel or uh, lazy river that accompanies it. And then there's some vertical or uh, aerial perspectives of what that could look like uh, with the uh, spray features on that zero beach entry in the top, the waterslide uh, on the bottom. But this would essentially give you what, you know, a new, nice-sized community pool that's similar uh, to what you have today. Uh, when we looked at the cost for this, uh, definitely got a little bit more than the five million base for the other two, just because you have uh, the new bathhouse and some other added amenities. So it was uh, in that eight and a half to nine million dollar range, uh, which is really about the, the total, when we talk about total project cost. Uh, that's pretty common for what we uh, see today. Uh, we have, and we also have escalation in here. So we're looking at today's cost plus, you know, tacking on another year, year and a half until the facility would be built. Uh, we recently had a project bid in uh, Longview, Texas, uh, out east. And uh, it was in the four and a half to five million dollar range for construction. And so uh, that's about as lean as we see uh, for municipal outdoor swimming pools today. Uh, we used to, when I started with our firm eleven years ago, uh, we used to say that five million dollars can get a, an outdoor municipal pool. And unfortunately, due to escalation uh, and cost increases, that's anywhere from six and a half to seven and a half to, to ten million dollars uh, these days for the outdoor uh, community pools. And so uh, these are the three options that we have developed so far when we look at the existing condition of the pool. And uh, again, maintain base repairs as the facility can continue in operation. Uh, or you could look at that renovation in addition to the pool, the renovation with the splash pad addition. Uh, or you could do essentially a replacement in kind for uh, the facility. Uh, and so in terms of uh, next steps are, next steps would include not only uh, refining these concepts based on uh, feedback, uh, updating the for that. We would also uh, look at the possibility of developing uh, a new concept. You know, we're looking at uh, facilities that would essentially be roughly the same size as what you have now. Uh, but we could also uh, look at options that would incorporate. Uh, if the goal of the city was to bring in more outsiders, then uh, we could look at what that would look like in terms of size, the facilities. This facility probably doesn't have people driving, driving in from that far, just due to the size of the facility. Uh, but our next step would be to maybe look at some other options uh, to increase the size of the outdoor aquatics, uh, as well as look at the operational side of the equation. So uh, we look at not only the total costs like we shared, but then also what those operational uh, budgets could look like, how visits you could expect throughout the summertime, uh, what the revenue would look like, as well as the expenses for the facility. And then uh, compare that with existing budgets, just to see how that would uh, change. Typically, new facilities uh, might cost a little bit more to operate, uh, but we also see that since it's newer, they uh, can generate more visits. And so you can uh, have an increased cost recovery and not have to subsidize the facility uh, as much. So uh, with that, that's a, a quick look at what we've done, uh, roughly the past uh, month and a half in terms of looking at the uh, existing pool, developing some options and budgets, and uh, would welcome any comments or questions that you may have for us.
Thank you for sharing your list of other cities that you've done business with.
Yes, sure.
Over thirty here listed and they're all within the state of Texas and they're not just all South Texas. I wanted to see that you guys had done something in West Texas or with, with a different climate. So there's Pampa on there. Not to say that we've committed to anything, because we haven't, but we're never gonna get anything done if we don't start. And we didn't have a clue what this would cost. And of course, they're very large numbers, but we had no idea. So thank you for a start.
Sure. Yeah, we done, uh, yeah, Pampa Canyon, uh, Plainview is one of our, we opened several years ago. Uh, we did the uh, outdoor aquatics pools that uh, Texas Tech with the lap pool and the lazy river. So yeah, we have extensive experience within the state of Texas.
Lots to consider. And I'm sure we'll, we have a couple of people from our LCDC board to hear with us here tonight. I'm sure they'll have lots of questions and the plan for that committee to meet and discuss these items as well.
Yes, ma'am. We're trying to uh, schedule a meeting in October to go over this with them, get their thoughts of how we want to proceed or what they would like to see. And again, this was brought about because um, as we look at a lot of different items and quality of life, this, this was one item that kept coming up that people were going to other communities uh, to visit their facilities and there were several questions that always been comments. Why doesn't uh, Levelland have something? And before we went too far down that path, uh, council said, let's look at our existing facility and see uh, what the status of it is. And could it be renovated? Could it be used to expand? So this is the first step. Um, and as with any capital project, as we get more solid information, it goes into the other projects that we're looking at to see uh, what gets funded, how it gets funded, uh, who should fund it. Um, the Community Development Corporation uh, receives money from sales tax dollars. Um, they've been, uh, done a great job with uh, the Oxy complex. Uh, they've also this year. Um they've been uh done a great job with uh the Oxy complex. Uh they've also this year invested almost seven hundred thousand dollars in city park to the west, but in other places throughout the city as well. So this is something that we will present to them, get their thoughts and comments. Um work with George as we uh work to uh have a final document. And then once it's done, we'll present it back to council, back to uh LCDC and and just decide how uh we move forward, when we move forward. Um as we all know, um and I appreciate you putting the escalation clauses in here. Uh you know, numbers you see today in another year are going to be higher in two or three years. There'll be different even then. But this gives us good information to work off of. Uh reliable, realistic information uh that we can make informed decisions about as we move forward.
Justin had brought up the idea a, a couple of years ago. He had said, you know, seems like the culture of swimming had changed. It, it evolved to these small shallow pools with slides and things. And then he said that the culture had kind of changed, that people wanted to really swim again. And so that's where the idea came that maybe we could do something with what we already had. And uh so that's kind of why we brought you in and wanted advice and ideas and conceptual pictures and definitely like the portion of the splash pad being able to be opened separately and not have to have a lifeguard and be unmanned and and open. And also a new bath house where we can potentially hold birthday parties. People could rent out and then also maybe use for some staff training here within the city when, when it wasn't rented out. Could be dual purpose that way. Um one of the great things about the spot where our pool currently is, is that all that land belongs to the city of Levelland. So it can be completely reimagined in its design and placement. The fences could be expanded, the road could even be, be changed in the sense that, you know, you're, you don't really have boundaries. Or they're, you do, but they're, they're flexible per se. Um so we'll go from here. Thank you for your time and all of your hard work.
Good thing. Yeah, we'll keep uh working through, communicate with uh Mr. Fisher, and then uh look forward to our next conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda for items A through F. If anyone would like to pull any of those items and discuss them independently from that consent agenda, that's totally allowable. Or can all be approved as a consent agenda item?
Those are all just routine things on that agenda and that consent.
The routine items are also items that have come before you um or or is there events that we've seen annually in the time as well?
And the motion for that would just be approval of a consent, of the consent agenda.
There's not any questions. I move that we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? With that, an opposed motion carries. Item number three is to consider and take necessary action on cemetery policies.
Mayor and council members, this item uh is before you this evening. At, at the last uh city council meeting, we had a citizen come up uh and express some concerns regarding uh our cemetery and the use of flags out at our cemetery. And uh we told him we would look into it. We would um investigate to, to see exactly what our policies are for or what our policies state. And when you look at our current um cemetery policies that were updated in August of twenty twenty, when you get to the, the section on general regulations, uh number six on page five, it says, no boxes, shells, glassware, sprinkler cans, water hoses, or similar articles will be permitted to remain on any grave, walkway, or street. Stick flags can be placed in an approved vase or on the headstone base. No stick flags shall be in the ground and cannot exceed eight inches by twelve inches. Stick flags that are worn, faded, or tethered must be picked up. So the city does allow flags out there. One of the things, and I was hoping it would be here uh tonight, is to make it a little more formal, more deserving of our veterans that uh many people want to recognize and honor and support is a stainless steel stand that would allow the stick flag uh to go in there. And it elevates it a little. It looks more uniform. And I think it would, would uh provide the recognition that is so um honorably deserved. Now, these items are and you know, we can look around, uh but in looking at these, they're about fifteen dollars a piece. Uh my proposal was that, you know, we provide one uh to the family. And if they want more, then we would sell them at the cost of the city if they wanted one for additional flags. But um we wanted to jump on this as, as quick as we could because uh it was a concern. And it's something that uh we need to make sure that uh families have the ability to recognize and honor and support their families, especially our veterans that have uh served us.
That I would like that this would, would allow this, it would allow it to go on, on any space. Right now, as it currently reads, it has to be in an approved vase or headstone. Well, if you can't afford a headstone, doesn't mean you can't have a flag. So that's, that's what I like about this concept is every veteran, even if there's not the ability to have a stone at that point, you'd have a flag. And there's, there's no reason that we can't do that. I, I just thought that that was uh limiting the way it's written right now. And we have the ability to, to change that. And I loved the idea of being able to provide one of those for, for free to, to the people who have a, a space here with, within our community. And it is stainless steel. And like you said, I mean, we haven't tangibly seen it. Maybe this one isn't the right one. But we'll find the right one. And maybe we can find the right policy and procedures to be able to get these to people for them to be able to use. And then I, I did some research myself, and I think we can even obtain a mass quantity of stick flags from the Veterans Association, Affairs Association. And we could be able to hand those out at our, at our cemetery office or at, at City Hall, or however we want to do that. But
At that cost of those, or is there anyone local that could manufacture those for us?
Good question.
I, I don't know, sir. I mean, we could look and see. I don't.
Might be worth a shot of just checking to mature.
Yeah, but the design is good, the material is good. I mean, it seems, I mean, I had found something which was like a small piece of pipe that went in the ground. This is much better than that. So uh but definitely like the idea of not having to have a headstone or the appropriate base to put that in, because I know they are so expensive. Mr. Powell, do you have any thoughts on that? I know you've done a lot of these.
I like the idea of like, like standing.
Yes, sir.
And providing those to families who had veterans who passed out. I think that's correct.
This time, don't, they don't, they don't go in the ground. They don't stick in the ground either.
They do stick in the ground. There's, they're about that far. And you just, you press on them and put them down in there. And it makes them a little bit more uh sturdy than just a stick flag that may be subject to, when we irrigate, wind, or whatever. I think this will make them look better and also honor the flag that is placed on there as well.
Essentially, maybe we could always try to have available a, a large quantity of the, of the stick flags within our office and
Especially around the holidays.
Would it be too much to ask? I don't know. I don't work in the cemetery. That if we saw a worn one, could our cemetery department just pull it and replace it? I mean.
Where's, where, where's my guy? There he is.
We see one that's faded, a stick flag.
Even Lions Club or Drug Re-Club doing that.
They currently do that now. So if they see a, a, you know, weathered flag or torn flag, they'll, they'll go ahead and, and take it down. They don't replace it. But if we had more that uh Yeah, we could definitely uh go through there, replace those. So and the, and I wanted to note, the reason why it was uh written the way it was back in twenty twenty was because it was a concern for the maintenance. So being in a vase or on a headstone was kind of keeping it off the ground necessarily. But uh we do allow one by one uh section around a temporary headstone or a temporary marker, and the flag can go in there as well. So that was, just wanted to note that. But this is a concern. I think we can work around that too, as long as it's close enough to the stuff that's already out there. We can, now if it's out in the middle of the, the row, then we would have to move it back to the the proper area so they can continue mowing through, weed eating and all those things.
And that being stainless steel, you could weed it around it and damage it like it would apply.
Yeah, I think that actually would be more durable is the, the stainless steel with the weed eater string. It's gonna tear up that um weathered wood pretty quickly. So this would probably protect that a little bit longer.
What, what size flag would that sound?
Uh it's eight by twelve, and that looks like that one. Yes. Yeah, it's a pretty good size. Um Yeah, pretty close. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it's twelve inches. Yeah.
But that's it.
And that is is that designed to be there all the time? The flags or just?
Uh yes, there's no, there's no restrictions on when or if they can be put up. They can be put up at any time. Uh Crest Ridge Funeral Home does come out during uh Veterans Day, and then they do put out flags as well. So they'll put them along the Drive Avenue H. And then sometimes they will have stick flags they'll put at each veteran's uh graveside as well. So we do have that additional uh thing going on at the cemetery.
Well, we have a great cemetery staff, and I know that they would be so kind to our family to be able to hand out these flag holders and, and help people honor their loved ones.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's not an action item, correct?
We would, if we want to move with this, we probably need to um
Be great if we could have them by the holidays. But any way to have it by Veterans Day, that's definitely.
We'll work harder than and we'll get with the cemetery uh committee and just apprise them of what we're doing and get their recommendation. And because I agree with your point that um where this is an approved headstone base is that take it to where if there's a flat marker or headstone that they can still be placed there. Just clarify that up. That allows a flag to be placed um where there's a graveside and there's an appropriate marker there. But we'll try to get that committee together in October. Um get this together, look around, see if someone can make them here. If they can't, get some ordered. So they will be ready by Veterans Day in November.
Awesome. Thank you for that.
Sure.
Next item on the agenda to consider and take necessary action on the Student Resource Officer Agreement with the Levelland Independent School District. Chief?
Chief really wants to talk, so.
Steve O'Brien to the, to the podium, please.
I'm getting used to this now. I'm not nearly as nervous as I was nine months ago. Um good evening. And before you today, two different wins. We're gonna start with the uh interlocal agreement with the school board. I met with the uh Love Land Independent School Board uh last Wednesday um at their board meeting. Uh we discussed the interlocal agreement. Um it reads just like last year's, the only change to that is the salary. And that is just because they do cover the cost of that officer. And uh we need to update that for the coming year. And so I'm asking you guys to allow that to be executed. I believe it has to be signed by you, the mayor, and then by Mr. Fisher and the superintendent as well.
Well, we definitely want those officers there.
Yes.
We're glad they're there.
Mayor, I move the uh council approve the mutual aid agreement with South Plains College.
We're on floor, Mr. Powell. Yeah.
This is a, yeah, Love Land ISP in our local agreement.
I move that we approve the Student Resource Officer Agreement with Love Land Independent School District authorized the mayor or city manager to, if necessary.
Motion in a second. All in favor? With that motion carries, none opposed. Next item is number five, consider and take necessary action on mutual aid agreement with the South Plains College Police Department.
Uh this one is a little bit different. Um Slater and I spoke almost in depth about this one for a little while. We had some questions on it, went back and forth. Basically, um in the event of a uh mass casualty or large incident, this just outlines whose role takes what and what each person's gonna be doing. Um in that case, kind of who has jurisdiction over the college and, and all that type of stuff. Very, very common. Um especially when you have jurisdictions that fall within your jurisdiction. And so that's all we're asking is for the um to allow me to sign that agreement with Chief Sullivan um to execute that.
You feel completely comfortable with this, and you know something weren't to happen exactly what everyone's role was.
Yeah, there's no concerns with the agreement at all. Other than some, I think some spacing issues that Slater said there's.
Largely.
This is the one I'm really answering. I have to make the motion that, that the council approve a mutual aid agreement with South Plains College. Um and the city manager and or the mayor be authorized to execute said.
No.
No, it's, it's mayor. Motion in a second. All in favor? With that, an opposed motion carries. Item number six is to consider and take necessary action. Thank you, chief, on resolution twenty twenty five dash fifteen amending the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget.
Hi, Mayor, Council. Appreciate you having me this evening. Uh today in front of you, we have a resolution uh twenty twenty five dash fifteen amending fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget. Um as we know, uh budget is a working document, and staff does their best job to anticipate any additional costs or changes throughout the year. But projects, especially capital projects, do have a um a change in our budget throughout the year, and especially when we have capital projects rolling from one fiscal year to the other. Um this budget amendment uh in summation is three hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and forty seven dollars. Um reflecting uh an accurate representations of expenditure um before we close out this fiscal year. Um if council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer um any if they do.
Multiple items on there, commitment to computer funds. I hope everyone had a chance to, to look at that and have any questions.
There's no questions. I make a recommendation, the council approves resolution number twenty twenty five dash fish fifteen amending the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget.
As I move that we approve resolution number twenty twenty five dash fifteen amending twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget.
The motion in a second by Mr. Ledesma. All in favor? I with that, an opposed motion carries. Item number seven is to consider and take necessary action on a resolution number twenty twenty five dash sixteen, reviewing and approving the city of Levelland's investment policy.
Mayor, members of council, this is an annual housekeeping item that um staff is asked to review this investment policy, bring it before the council with any recommended changes. We also review it against any uh potential changes that the legislature uh may have created uh in the last session. This policy is very similar uh to previous years with uh a couple of uh changes. The first change is, is number three on responsibility and control, the investment committee. Um this item now reads, the city council hereby establishes an investment committee consisting of the city manager, the director of finance, the assistant city manager, and a member of council. Previously, this was just the city manager, the director of finance, and the city attorney. Uh I've never seen a city attorney on an investment committee. Um Slater agreed not to serve it, really heartbroken. But uh these are the ones, these, these four that we recommended are charged with the responsibility to make sure that our investments follow the Public Funds Investment Act, to make sure that we are, are taking care of the public trust that has been given us. So mayor will work with you uh in regards to which member of, of council uh we can appoint to this committee so that we can work with it on this. The other thing, and just right below that, delegation of authority and training, um it was added in here uh where it says, the director of finance is given the authority to deposit, withdraw, invest, transfer, or manage a city's funds. There's now a clause in there that says upon consultation with the city manager. That way, uh as funds are moved, I'm aware of it, or Justin is aware of it, so that we just know that we have moved funds from this account to here or that, or we paid this. Uh nothing against our current uh finance director. This is just span of control that provides extra set of eyes on everything uh that we're doing. We also uh within this policy within this policy, um we added um I had it, now I can't find it. I'm working on three, three drafts of this. Maybe Slater took it out and didn't tell me. Oh. It's in the very beginning where it talks about objectives. Uh we have safety, liquidity, yield. We added accountability as a uh, an objective of our policy that financial accountability is a commitment to responsibly managing and being answerable for financial resources and decisions. It involves setting clear objectives, practicing ethical management, and providing transparent reporting of financial activities, ensuring individuals and organizations are responsible for both their financial decisions and outcomes. Its key components include transparency, accuracy, compliance with rules, and clearly defined goals and ownerships of financial tasks. Lot of policies have a lot of words. We felt accountability was very important to make sure it's within our investment policy because as your officers of the city, we are accountable not only to you, but to the citizens of the city to make sure that we are managing the public funds entrusted to us to the absolute best of our ability. So we would recommend uh approval of this policy. Happy to answer. Happy to answer. Any questions council may have?
And, and Cynthia usually presents this to us, what, quarterly?
Yes, ma'am. Our, our investment report, um we've been a little behind on that. Um no excuse, we're trying to get back into the rhythm of getting that back where it needs to be. Um but she was also dealing with trying to get two audits done within one year and that kinda threw a few things off, but we're back on task.
Any questions on this resolution?
We approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash sixteen approving the City of Levelland Investment Policy.
Back to.
The second, motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That and opposed motion carries. Next item is consider and take necessary action to approve resolution twenty twenty-five, judge seventeen to submit nominations for the Hawkley County Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Mayor and council members, that time of the year where we um recommend someone to be uh to the Hawkley County uh Board of Directors uh for the appraisal district. We currently have uh Buddy Moore that's serving and I believe he has been contacted and he's willing to continue to serve.
I spoke with him and he.
Staff would recommend that. I think Andrea did some clarification today on the votes.
So they've got what I feel like is a rather unorthodox nominating process. You can nominate one person or you can nominate five people. Well, that would be one person that the city wants to support, or you could nominate a whole slate of people. The City of Levelland will have three hundred and sixty-one votes that they will place later on uh in the fall. Once the official nominations are in and you have to place your votes, you'll have three hundred and sixty-one votes to place. But uh as Mr. Fisher said, Buddy Moore has served uh on behalf of the City of Levelland. We've nominated him uh every, every two years since twenty nineteen. We do this every two years. Uh and he has uh agreed to serve again if council so chose to nominate him. So what we would need tonight is we would need a nomination or a slate of nominees from Levelland City Council that we will put in the form of a resolution and we will send over to the appraisal district. And you will see the current list of officers uh in your agenda packet.
Mayor, I move council approve Buddy Moore nominee.
We have a motion. Motion in a second by Mr. Stewart, all in favor? With that and opposed motion carries for Mr. Moore.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Item number nine is city manager report, staff updates, project updates, staff citizen recognition, items of community interest. No action will be taken.
Mayor, members of council, um our wastewater treatment plant is um moving along. We have uh weekly meetings with the engineering firm Park Hill that's overseeing. We discuss whatever uh issues or challenges or concerns uh that may be going on out there. We're currently right now um trying to get an estimate of the big pile of dirt of how much of the cubic yards will be needed to close out the old plant. And then whatever is left over, uh part of that, we will um place in the tracks of the pivot system. Uh we're looking at shortening that pivot system a little just to create a, a new set of tracks so we can repair the old ones. Uh and we'll, we'll be um working on, on that process. We also repaired the gate. Uh if you'll recall, several months back, uh a citizen came in, I believe it was Miss Way, uh said that, you know, you could go right in there. Uh we've got that gate secured now where um it's, you have to have a code to get in. So we've uh protected that area as well. Um this Thursday, October second, from two to four, uh XL Energies having an executive forum. Uh there's some of their big people are coming in to meet with community leaders to talk about some of their future projects and things. Also Friday uh at eleven thirty AM is a Chamber of Commerce Volunteer Recognition Luncheon. Uh the city has a table if you want uh to go and uh sit at the table. Um let Andrea know so we make sure we get all those covered. Um Saturday is Cork and Keg in Falling for the Wallace. Uh another big day, but we're ready. Uh our fire department uh is probably gonna have the number one attraction again. They're gonna have their little house out there that kids can shoot water at. Uh last year it was crazy and the kids had a good time. Sunday is um St. Michael's Jamaica and car show that will be right there um across from Walmart. That's a great event, very well attended. Um they're gonna have some crossing guards, uh volunteers to try to manage the people that are parking at Walmart and walking over. We're trying to get some rumble strips to put out on Sherman just to try to slow down that traffic. Uh it's a big event. A lot of people are going different directions everywhere. Uh the, the church does a lot for our community, so we want to make sure that we uh support them in ways that we can for the safety of uh the guests that go there. Um next Monday, October sixth, uh we'll have our joint workshop with our planning and zoning commission. That's primarily gonna be, the whole agenda is just gonna be that. Uh we delivered to you guys a proposed zoning amendments. It's very exciting reading. If you need anything to help you go to sleep beforehand, uh that document will get you there very, very quickly. Um keep Levelland beautiful. Fall sweep is Saturday, October eleventh, from nine to eleven thirty. Uh we are also gonna be working on trying to, to get weeds and various things uh cleaned up again. Uh we did, we did a great job in, in summer. We've been trying to stay on it, but with rain and just different things, uh it, you can get behind very, very quickly, but our guys will, will jump on it. We're also gonna begin uh mosquito spraying again as weather allows. I don't know where the mosquitoes have come from, but they're big and they're mean right now. So we are working on that. And then um at the October twentieth meeting, we will have the revisions to our building codes. Uh will be coming out for y'all to consider, but probably the most important thing we'll be doing at that meeting. Um if y'all recall, the legislature back in the spring uh passed new legislation regarding the moveover bill that added the animal control uh officers uh to that bill. We will be doing a proclamation that recognizes that bill, but more importantly, the proclamation will honor uh Crystal Goforth and John Quarter. Um two of our employees that we lost uh in line of duty uh back in twenty twenty-two. And we continue to look for ways to um honor them and appreciate what they have done. So um tho- that will be happening on the twentieth.
Sir, thank you, sir. Next item is to convene into executive session in accordance with the Texas Government Code five five one dot oh seven four to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee municipal court judge. Uh the City of Levelland, the city council of the City of Levelland will convene into executive session on the twenty ninth day of September twenty twenty-five at six fifty-five PM o'clock. Subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows. Convene into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code five five one dot oh seven four to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employer municipal court judge. Please. of a public officer or employer municipal court judge. Please.
The City Council of the City of Loveland has completed its executive session on the 29th of September 2025 at 7:12 p.m. o'clock.